Get supposed, oh, there we are. Thank you so much. Do we have any special intentions to start tonight?
I do, Mr. President.
Move it closer to you.
I do, Mr. President. Please keep former Governor Mike Foster in your prayers as he's in hospice care. Also, the family of Rudy Volatalina Sr., who's passed away recently. We ask that you keep them and their families in your prayers. Thank you.
Anybody else? Deacon, Ray Bier, would you lead us in vocation?
Pastor Michael. 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 Amen.
Amen. Pastor Michael. Pastor Michael. Pastor Michael. Pastor Michael. Pastor Michael. Please stand and place your right hand over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Councilmember Brennan is absent. Anyone in the audience who would like to sit far end of the room, and you can go down there to address the council. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting.
Before we go any further, I see we have a gentleman that I want to introduce to everybody, Big U, Jason Urle, our Eerim Constable for the Sixth Justice Court. Are you here to repossess cars tonight or just to say hello?
No, I'm just here to tell everybody how excited I am to be here and to see a lot of familiar faces in one place. That's a big difference. And to hear Al Morella say that pledge of allegiance that he does so strongly. So, my name is Jason Urle. I am your constable. I am the constable for the Sixth Justice Court of Jefferson Parish. I cover Kenner, Harahan, River Ridge, and Metairie. I was appointed unanimously on July 9th to take over the position as constable, and I've enjoyed every second of it. One of the most frequently asked questions about what is a constable and what do they do? So, to briefly explain it, I work with the Justice Court of Jefferson Parish. I work with probably a name that y'all are familiar with, Judge Kevin Centani, who's the Justice of Peace, and our Clerk of Courts office. I am responsible for serving all the orders that Judge Centani submits, including evictions, garnishments, and civil cases. So, that's kind of who I am in a nutshell, and it's been an honor to be here tonight. I appreciate the invite from the mayor, the chief of police, and the council, of course, and open up to any questions that you may have for me. That was pretty easy. Thank you, guys. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Is there any motions, resolutions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, September 18th, 2020. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. We have none. Item 4 is correspondence, reports from the mayor, CIO, or department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chairman. Well, welcome back to our first live council meeting since March. I think it was the first meeting in March when we, right after that, we wound it up in the middle of COVID. We are in Phase 3 right now, which everyone knows. That allows us to be live at this point. And I told this council, I told the people of the city of Kenner, my administration, that as soon as we got to that point and the numbers were at a plateau, and we feel like that's what's happening right now, there's some decreases here and there, that we would get back into a live council meeting. It is our goal to get back into our council chambers, to get y'all back in your council chambers. The problem with the council chambers is each and every one of you all know, if you accepted the invitation from my CEO, as you walked the council chambers, you saw that we would be prohibiting members of the public past around 6 or 8. When you put us, this row right here, your row, your council meeting, so all you council people in there, and members of our administration, you get to about 6 or 8 members of the public. It is y'all's duty to hold a council meeting, it is my duty to control the buildings of the city of Kenner, and I will not, I just want to make it clear, and you know this, but I want the people of Kenner to know this, I will not prohibit members from the public coming to a public meeting. That is why Zoom was working so well. I think we were getting numbers between 30 to 40 on a Zoom council meeting. Of course, we couldn't stay on Zoom forever. But if you look at the numbers out here tonight, and she just wrote it down about probably right before we started this, 6 to 8 members of the public would only be allowed into the council. We have 25 members of the public. I wouldn't want to poll the people behind me to see who would want to be those 14, 15, 16 people that would not be allowed into the council chambers. I'm not going to do that, and I think the people sitting behind me would be a little irritated tonight, provided that opportunity. This place will hold 250. So, I think we're in good shape. I think that's important, that we get that out, and let people know that we will continue to do this as long as we have the restrictions put out to us and also the issues that we have to overcome in certain buildings. During the last six months, we have kept essential services going. There's a rumbling out there that essential services or services of the city of Kenner have not been happening throughout the city of Kenner. That's bull. It's totally absurd to even hear that. We have kept all of our services going. I want to thank the Kenner Police Department, our Kenner Fire Department, Public Works, all of our field operations, all of the administration, you all, and the people of Kenner for all cooperating because everything has been happening. We had to slow some things down, live council meetings, we had to stop that. We had to stop break tags. But the chief of police worked very closely with my office and also the governor's office to make sure that the certificate was good enough for Kenner law, and it was good enough for our Kenner Police Department, it was good enough throughout the state and also in other states. It's been very careful planning by this administration, but I want to give credit to our EOC, our Emergency Operations Department, our EOC, Emergency Operations Center, Mr. Doug Dote, and also Ms. Heather Hilliard, and all the men and ladies that work in that building and keep us going with those things. All the employees, the employees' dedication, the council's dedication, my administration's dedication, our fire department, all the people that work for the city of Kenner, and again, thank the citizens of Kenner for cooperating with us. Very, very important that we get that word out. And also, City Hall is open. I hear that rumbling also, and it's really, really disturbing when you hear those misrepresentations. I'll be nice right now. It's misrepresentations when they say that City Hall is not open. I'm sure y'all know, because y'all have been told, Building A is open. Anything you need to get, code, clerk of court, court, it is open. Those services that require the constituent to walk in and get something is open. Outside of physically being open, I said already, all services have been supplied and provided to our constituents, except for break tags. But I'll come back to break tags a little bit later on. I have a few things to go over. I know these mayor comments are getting a little bit longer than usual, Council Chairman, but it's because of what we have going on. So, I'm going to ask that Adam and Doug, Adam Campo and Doug Dote, give a brief report, step up to the podium, give a brief report on what they've been doing. When I talk about Doug, I'm talking about the EOC. When I talk about Adam, I'm talking about the technology part. Don't, don't, you know, think that other directors, other people in my administration haven't been doing anything. Everyone's been doing something, but it took EOC and technology to work together to get these things done. So, I'd like to ask Doug to step up first, give a brief report on what's going on, and also, Adam with the technology part, and then he needs to come back to me, Council Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, just want to give you an update on number of facts concerning COVID as it stands now. So, emergency management continues to monitor cases and local growth rates based on the Louisiana Department of Health data. The city coordinates with the parish and Ochsna health system to provide community testing at several sites within the city, and up to 150 tests are provided at each one of those sites on a daily basis within Kenner. There are 18 census tracts in Kenner, and data is collected on positive test results for residents in those tracts. This information is available online on both the state and the parish Corona dashboards. So, to date, in Jefferson Parish as a whole, there's been a total of 17,673 cases reported, and of those, 570 have resulted in deaths. 32 cases were reported for Jefferson Parish today. I'm sorry, 32 cases reported yesterday and 40 today. There was one death today, and the last death in Jefferson Parish was Monday. In Kenner, as of September 28th, the cumulative total of cases is 3,087. That's as of 9/28, that's 34 cases over the previous week. This week, the week prior to that, was 70 cases. So, we've seen a drop in the number of cases. As of 9/23, there's a 3.7% testing positivity rate for Jefferson Parish, including Kenner, and the rate has held the same for two weeks. Regionally, the number of positive cases appears to be declining. For instance, in Orleans Parish, it's 1.6%, St. Charles, 2.9%, and St. Bernard, 3.1%. All of this is good news. We're encouraged by the local and regional numbers. They suggest that the masking and social distance measures that have contributed to the slowing of the spread of COVID-19 in our community. Hopefully, these trends will continue. We suggest continued public compliance with those recommendations for masking and social distancing. The city of Kenner continues to comply with Governor Edwards' emergency orders, as well as follow the CDC and LDH guidelines, as well as CISA and Louisiana State Fire Marshal guidance on social distancing and setting up office space and meeting areas. We remain flexible in our operational plans, allowing us to pivot if we see any increase that requires adjustment to activities and scheduling. And we will continue to assess the local conditions and make modifications, recommendations to our plans based on public health data advisories and best practices. Were there any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. So, I'm Adam Campo. Most of y'all know me. I work in the Internal Audit Department for the duration of COVID. And prior to that, I've overseen a lot of the operations related to the technological elements of this and how we prepared for it and how we carried it out. This all started for us on March 13th, essentially with the mayor's first emergency proclamation. We were tasked with setting up an auxiliary network here at the Ponchatrain Center. By March 18th, in under two weeks, the ID department, assisted by members of the audit department, established that remote network here. The tasks that were included in that included essentially building our own independent network inside of the Ponchatrain Center. It was the deployment of thousands of feet of cable, Cat 6 and Ethernet cables, in order to reach across the five rooms that we occupied. This included the mayor's staff, the mayor, and you, the council, and your staff as well. IT had to borrow a watch guard and five or six network switches from Kevin Lang at Digicom, and we're really grateful for that, that they were able to do that for us. But we successfully established that network. Moving on to March 17th, essential services in the city continued without disruptions, and remote operations were implemented for some staff. Here at the Ponchatrain Center, we had the mayor's court, finance, recreation, code enforcement, and community development all present, as well as the council members. Additional employees began working from home. By March 18th, we began to start looking towards Zoom to communicate with one another, both in our meetings for administration as well as looking forward to council meetings. IT began with audit to look at the security protocols of this and started remoting into people's computers so that we could use Zoom in the safest way possible. We only had one hiccup the entire time we were dealing this at one council meeting that everybody remembers, I'm sure, when we got Zoom bombed. So, we wanted to say thank you for that, for everybody being our guinea pigs and keeping up with us while we learned a new technology and implemented it, you know, for you and the people of Kenner. By Thursday, March 19th, the onsite call center was activated in EOC. A limited number of call takers were assigned to report to the Emergency Operations Center in accordance with the COVID safety precautions. Us in IT, we began to look at soft phones, and what soft phones are, are phones that we install through the VoIP system on computers. We were able to successfully do this and then have a remote call center that we called the C-19 Work Group, where people could call into the city, get one of any dozen operators that we had on call, and then an email would go out to those departments to return the calls to the citizen that needed help. By Friday, March 20th, the Ponchatrain Center Essential Services facility closed, and we moved to more remote operations. This started the IT in the second wave of setting up the second network that we had to set up in COVID, which was the at-home network. A big step in that, as we said, were the phones. On March 23rd, iPads were repurposed from the Qsend project and sent out to employees so that they could begin to do these remote operations from home. On March 27th, COVID-related delays caused concern within many departments because we had a couple of setbacks with the delivery. COVID-19 was causing delivery shortages and backlogs all over the country at that point in time. So, we started to tell employees, go get your computers, go get your printers, get anything you need, bring them to your house, and IT will help you set them up. And in some cases, IT even helped deliver those to some of the people that needed to be on that at-home network. Eventually, we learned that we were going to get a delivery of these laptops, and to ensure that we didn't miss the delivery, Mike Claus, that guy there, actually did his work in the hallway of Building C on the ground floor to make sure we wouldn't miss the delivery man with delivery of hundreds of surface laptops that we all use to this day. And I want to thank him for that. That was above and beyond. We set up and we disseminated over 50 iPads by the end of this, again, that were slated for Qsend systems and repurposed for COVID-19. We delivered and had employees deliver where possible and pick up their own office equipment, and we distributed over 120 surfaces for at-home use. To set up all of those surfaces, Audit and multiple people within the IT department took delivery on a Friday and spent the weekend, days, and weekend nights setting up every single one of those to get full dissemination out by Monday of that week. By Friday, April 17th, we conducted the first city council Zoom meeting. Included an absolute minor amount of training because of all the technologically advanced people that we have, both in the administration and on the council. That's a joke. In all seriousness, this was a use of a new technology. No one had ever conducted a council meeting on an interactive video chat. It was a group effort. It went almost flawlessly, meeting after meeting, and we were able to resume regularly scheduled meetings all the way to our current in-person meeting. We had only one incident, which I mentioned before, and we, at that point, upped the security protocols within the meetings using members of the audit department, IT department, and Molly McGinnis from Code Enforcement to ensure that that would not happen again. By Monday, May 18th, we went into a partial reopening, Phase 1, Tier 1. Code Enforcement, EOC, were already operating out of Building A behind glass at this point, but we started to look into building what we affectionately call Zoombots, which you can see back here behind me. Essentially, what these machines are were Zoom screens with a printer attached to them, a scanner attached to them, and we rolled them out to court so that we could have less contact with members of the public and start talking about resuming some court proceedings. On the same day, on July 9th, that we conducted one of our many Zoom council meetings, we had our first domestic violence hearings in the clerk of court on these machines that were built by the audit department and IT in conjunction with Ronnie Maines from CRC. And I wanted to take the time to thank him for his donations that he gave to the city to help us build these machines. By August 11th, we worked with Digicom on these same machines to install credit card readers for a remote location here at the Ponchatrain Center. That has not gone live yet, but all of the testing on it has been successful up until this point. Wednesday, August 26th, the governor went to Phase 2, and by September 14th, Mayor Zahn had issued the Phase 3 proclamation. We learned about two weeks ago that we would be returning to a meeting here, and again, the IT department, audit department, as well as KTV jumped to the task so that we could actually complete everything that we needed to do to be in here today, having this meeting. I want to personally thank the council both for bearing with us, the mayor for letting us do all of these really interesting projects, and then everybody that worked with us under my work group. You know, that's Charles, Rob and Bobby, Mike, Josh, Kenneth, Denise, Jennifer, Nicole, Leon, Sam, and Alan, Nick, Molly from Code Enforcement who worked with us, and Luis from the clerk of court staff as well. I think it's a really big accomplishment that we are where we are, and thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
I have a question. When can they have their Qsend iPads back?
Never. Thank you all.
Thank you, Adam and Doug. I'm hearing that we're a little fuzzy, so I apologize. I don't know if it's better close or further away. Earlier, we talked about break tags. It is said that necessity is the mother of invention. That is certainly the case here, as we had to rethink our break tag situation. When you're losing money with a department or a part of a department for something that can be done elsewhere, we had to look and figure it out. And it did take a little longer than we expected because, as you all know, we told y'all different things over probably three months. We're going to do this, and we rethought it and said, no, we're not going to do that. So, we had some, you know, critiquing that we had to do on our model. We finally launched that last Friday, and I'm happy to say that the break tag model that was 50 years old is working at other locations. To date, at 12 o'clock noon today, we've issued 1,160 break tags, and I can tell you, I have not had one complaint. Now, I'm not going to say that there's no complaints out there, but I have not had a complaint. We are at five different locations, and the locations seem to be happy. We're going to expand that and go to other locations. It's important that we're doing this this way because we're saving money. Plus also, what I'm hearing, and Ashley, Chad Pittfield was with me the other day, we were walking out of a restaurant, and we heard a resident walked up and said, yeah, I stopped and I got my break tag. It went fine at a certain location. I'm not going to promote the location, but it's someplace, obviously, here in the city of Kenner. And while I was there, I was able to get some other things. Those are the things that are happening. So, we're hearing that if you have a problem, you can actually get the problem resolved at an auto dealer, or if you're at another location like Discount Zone that has tents set up outside, you can actually get something to drink or eat if you want to. So, we're seeing those things work. Molly McGinnis with Code has taken this on. If you don't mind, I'd like to have Molly just give a deeper report on what's going on with the break tags. Molly?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The break tag, the new satellite motor vehicle inspection stations are running incredibly well as far as we've been concerned. We certify them by giving them the tests that everyone in the state takes in order to issue break tags. I have two break tag inspectors that are able, you know, they don't have anything that restricts them from going out in the public, and every day, at least one, if not both of them, is going around the city to each station to give them support and help them along with anything that they need, any questions they may have while they're new. And on the days when they're not doing that, we're working on, we have another eight applications that we're processing now, so we have another eight stations that should be opening very shortly. But we have not had, I haven't had any complaints, you know, knock on wood, but everything's going very well. They're being issued at a rate that exceeds the number of tags that we were able to issue in the past with the one break tag station, because we were only able to average about 100 a day. And this is only seven days, and we're at 1,200 essentially. So, I think that's excellent. I think the citizens are getting great service and quickly. If y'all have any questions or concerns, please let me know. Be happy to help.
Molly, I just want to thank you for getting the thing done. I had plenty calls from March until last Friday about people getting break tags, and this past week, I've got many calls thanking me for the city getting this thing done. And basically, they're going to Discount Zone, several little people, and it's been in and out quick. They haven't had any problems. So, thank you for getting that done.
Yes. And, you know, while I'm up here, I want to thank John Bradley, Mike Carter, and the manager of Break Tag, Kenneth Anderson, for doing, they really have done this work. They've done a fantastic job, and I wouldn't do it without them. So glad to keep our Break Tag guys doing other things. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. I have a question, and again, before I go forward, to thank everybody in your department for the work they're doing, and we will obviously make this better. My question is, for many of the citizens, particularly in District 1, the seniors would want to know, are they concerned about the 45-day? Can you go over that to make sure that people go with it, if something within 45 days or whatever it is, that they are not intimidated about getting it?
Right. We're doing a total amnesty, like, you know, the libraries do, where you can go turn in your overdue books and pay no fees, even if it's been years. It doesn't matter when it expired. It could have expired years ago, but for the next 45 days until November 9th, we will not be charging any late fees. And I assume that we will continue assessing that date, and if we feel like we've caught up enough, you know, I think that will depend, but the date right now is 45 days, November 9th, and there are no late fees for anyone, and it doesn't matter when it expired. So, encourage them, and from what I've heard, there are not long lines, or if any lines at all. There are a couple locations that are easily accessible to District 1 that don't have lines. I think that your constituents would be well served.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Fouchet, if you could please, along with IT, maybe establish what 45 days is and be able to put that on the internet to note 45 days from when, so people will have an idea, and don't wait to the last minute to be able to get their break tag. I would appreciate that.
The date's November 9th.
Okay. Can we put that on the city's Facebook page?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman McKenna?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. I just want to say that I've had positive feedback as well. I just want to say that I've had positive feedback as well, especially Discount Zone, it's in and out on the first day. Several people said that it was very seamless. I think it's a great thing, and I know that especially Discount Zone in particular, they are open on Sundays as well. Is that correct? So you can actually get it seven days a week now. I think that's a huge improvement of what we could do. I'm excited to, I'm actually really just mostly excited that people actually cared about getting a break tag, because I can imagine, I imagine most people are like, ooh, I don't even need to get it. Don't even need to worry about it. So having 1,100 people, you know, get out there and be enthusiastic about it, I think that that says a lot about Kenner residents and Kenner citizens, that they actually care and, you know, want to do the right thing. So thank you very much, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you all.
Councilman Brannigan?
Molly, one thing that I think we need to look at is when we get close to the November 9th date, we need to look at how many break tags have been issued, because we know that, I think we had about 10,000 that were expired, and we may need to move that back, you know, depending on how many are left. I mean, if there's five left, we don't have to move it back. If there's 200, then it's something that we need to address and come up with a plan for time, for extending the time.
Yes, sir. I discussed that, discussed that with the administration, and when we got closer to the date, we were going to assess how many had been issued and how many we thought were still outstanding, so that we didn't penalize anyone unnecessarily, and if we need to, we'll reassess and, you know, adjust that date.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has questions for Ms. McGinnis? Mr. Mayor, is that, is that the end of your presentation?
Almost there. Real quickly, we want to talk about CARES. We have received $8 million to date from CARES. This is crucial federal aid. This has allowed us to do a lot of things, even though our employees have been here and working, some employees could not come in, so we've had to put some employees out. We could not bring all of our employees in. That is some problems that we've had in some different departments. But we brought in outside contractors, which each of you all know this, because all the district council people did a PSA with me with the tree cutting. So I got Chad Pittfield on this, he actually got me on this. He was very instrumental in getting H and O to do our grass, as you've seen that happening throughout the city, and most importantly, RIS. RIS has done every tree, I believe, if not done, it's to be done very shortly, in the city of Kenner that looks a lot better. So I want to thank those and all the city workers that have helped with that too, because you saw our city workers, I even saw Mark Lorelso out there a few times, picking up and throwing it back in his truck. So I appreciate all the workers, all the directors, my deputy CEOs, and my CEO for working with us to get this done. The bad news is CARES ended yesterday, so hopefully Congress will continue to negotiate so we can get some more. Financials, it leads me into the financials, because CARES isn't, it was helpful, but our financials are in trouble. September, we got the report for September, it's down 16% from last year, which equates to $552,000, represents the month of July, you get it two months later. So the month of July that we received in September is $552,000 down. If you compare that to the fiscal year, it's 18% down. When you compare that to money, it's 1.9 million dollars down from last year. So we're almost, at this time last year, we were $2 million ahead, we're $2 million behind this time. Combination of CARES and fiscal responsibility is what's getting us through it right now. I'm going to tell you that, you know, you have a budget coming up. The '21, '22 will present severe challenges if we don't put our thinking caps on. If we don't do something to figure out what we need to do to continue, if these shortfalls continue, which I don't see them getting better anytime this year, and you've got to remember, we start working on '21, '22 in March, so we don't even have a whole year to prepare for the next budget. If those things stay like they are, we've got to put our thinking caps on, like I said, and look at how we're going to do some things for the following budget calendar. We need to make sure that we keep our police, fire, and public works funded. I'm not going to let those things be compromised. I mean, of course, there's other departments too, but when you talk about the needs of a city, guys, you've got to talk about police, fire, and public works. Those are the things that we've got to supply to our residents. Of course, don't anybody leave here saying the mayor's not worried about any other department. That would be ridiculous. What I'm worried about is police protection, fire protection, and public works. I'm not concerned with our Kenner Police Department. I'm concerned with making sure you all understand we have got an issue next year. We're going to fund police. This administration is not, not going to help the police department, our police chief, get the police department funded where it needs to be. I'm not going to let our fire department not be funded. I'm not going to let public works be funded. Those are the things we need to put first and foremost. Again, we have a superior police and fire department and public works, but it's important that we keep it like that and make sure that they're properly funded by whatever means we need to do, whatever things we need to think of to make, to make sure those things continue. The last thing is, the city received a proposal from Atlantis. I want to thank you, Councilman Hayes, as the District Three Councilman, for working very closely with my office, along with Candace Watkins in Economic Development. We received the proposal from Atlantis. They were the sole bid, and they are the people that are going to spend close to a billion dollars, half a billion dollars, out at the lakefront. It's important that we support that. I signed the letter just a little bit ago. That's headed to the, I'll send a copy to your office first, Councilman Hayes, and also the rest of the council. That is important that we keep that going. This, this project's going to be huge for the city of Kenner. Look, it's, it's my administration, your office, Councilman Hayes, each and every one of you all, Economic Development, Candace Watkins, but let's also thank our state reps. Debbie Vilio did something that has never been done before. She got that a 99-year lease, and she did it in the middle of COVID. I wish we'd have had that help before, but we didn't. So it's important that we recognize the help that Debbie Vilio did with not even really in session. She was able to do it when she got back in, in the middle of COVID, a 99-year lease, which made it appetizing for someone to come here. That's extremely important. So if you see Debbie, and look, the rest of our delegation, Kurt Talbot is our senator, he was extremely helpful too when he got to the senate level. No, no opposition, either one. Joe Stagney and also Gary Smith, our other two reps that represent the city of Kenner, not that area, but still, they helped Debbie, they helped work it through there, all the colleagues. So thanks to all four of those state representatives and senators for what they did. I promise I'm done. Thank you.
Councilman Wilmot?
I just wanted to give a few kudos to people that did a lot of work, and a lot of names were already mentioned, but I want to mention them again, the ones that I know firsthand. Of course, Mayor, thank you for setting up the Zoom conference meetings themselves. They were ran fantastic. The timing, not everybody agreed necessarily with the time sequences, but things were done well, and I appreciate that. Adam Campo, Charles Alon, Michael Claus, outstanding, fantastic job, really, really good. Early council president, George Brannigan, he had to do a lot of shaking and moving and changing things and making things work, and you did a fantastic job too, George. And current council president, Glenn Hayes. It takes a lot of work and effort to make all this stuff come together, logistics. And again, I appreciate being here. This is our first face-to-face meeting we've had in quite some time, numerous months, and it's done very well. Safety has been first and paramount, I can tell, and I appreciate it deeply, especially having a healthcare background. To me, this is done well. Thank you all.
Anyone else? Moving on, item five is acceptance rejection of bids requiring an expenditure of less than $5,000. We have none. Item six is change orders requiring an expenditure of less than $5,000. We have none. Item seven is acceptance of committee findings for final passage. We have none. Item eight is re-subdivision ordinances for final passage. Item 8A is summary ordinance number 12,751, an ordinance approving the plan of re-subdivision of lots 15 through 20 and lots 93 through 98 into lot 98A square 178, Veteran Heights subdivision, Kenner, Louisiana. If I could get a motion in a second, Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion by Councilman Wilmot, seconded by Councilman McKenney, to approve the consent agenda. Council members, please vote. We are going to be voting by roll call again.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan is absent. Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Motion passes 6-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item nine, public hearings for first and final passage. Item 9A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,750, an ordinance approving the plan of re-subdivision of lots 1, 2, 3, and 7 through 62 square 142, Lincoln Manor subdivision, with which lots are owned by the Kenner Housing Authority into new lots 1A, 10A, 20A, and 40A, and approving a planned unit development to allow the new construction of 10 senior living units on new lot 40A, the construction of new 32-unit apartment complex and community building on new lot 20A, the construction of a new Kenner Housing Authority Office building on new lot 10A, and the conversion of an existing building into a maintenance building on new lot 1A, all in square 142, Lincoln Manor subdivision in Kenner, Louisiana.
We have a motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Segura, to open the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to open your hearing. We're now in a public hearing. Is there anyone with a presentation?
I do, but I, okay, stop. Yes, thank you, Council President. You know, I apologize for the background. The applicant in, the applicant in this case is the Kenner Housing Authority, the, I'm sorry, the owner of the property is the Kenner Housing Authority, and the applicant is National Development of America. The property is located in square 142 and is bound by 31st Street on the north, 30th Street on the south, Helena Street on the east, and Augusta Street on the west. The site is currently developed as the 58-unit Glenwood apartment complex, along with the main offices of the Kenner Housing Authority. In support of this particular application, there were several meetings with the residents surrounding and the residents of the housing development. At this point, all the residents have said they support the project, so there were in-person meetings and teleconference meetings due to COVID. The property is zoned RR1 single-family residential. The surrounding development is all single-family and zoned RR1. As to the re-subdivision, all of the proposed lots, 1A, 10A, 20A, and 40A, all meet the minimum requirements for the city of Kenner, simple re-subdivision, with no new street or easement of access, or the extension or creation of any public improvements being required. The applicant is applying for a planned unit development on the new lots. It's going to consist of the renovation of the existing Kenner Office Building into a maintenance building on new lot 1A, the construction of a new 5,944 square foot office building for the Kenner Housing Authority on new lot 10A, the demolition of the existing 48-unit Glenwood apartment complex, and the construction of a new 37,368 square foot four-building 32-unit apartment complex, and the construction of a new 2,236 square foot community building, all on new lot 20A, and the demolition of the existing two five-unit senior living buildings, and the new construction of two new 3,456 square foot five-unit senior buildings on new lot 40A. There will also be the demolition of two additional buildings. The apartment complex, the new Glenwood apartment complex, will consist of four separate apartment, apartment buildings. New buildings one and two will be approximately 8,900 square feet and include eight two-bedroom, two-bath units in each, in each building. The new buildings three and four will be approximately 9,800 square feet and include four two-bedroom, two-bath units and four three-bedroom, two-bath units. Finally, the new elderly apartment buildings will be 3,000 square feet and will, as I said, have five new units in each building. The total number of units after construction will be 24 two-bedroom, two-bath, eight three-bedroom, and 10 new elderly units. A review of their application has determined that all of the off-street parking ingress, egress, excuse me, pedestrian access for sidewalks internally and around the perimeter, dumpsters, and minimum loading spaces have been complied with. The buildings themselves will be developed in a similar architectural craftsman style. Exterior of the buildings will be a combination of brick veneer and cement fiber. The small porches of each building will resemble a typical craftsman style with wood columns framing the porches on a brick veneer base. Finally, the landscaping and the buffering for the project does meet all the city's requirements. There will be one new monument sign proposed for the development along 31st Street, which will identify the Glenwood apartment complex. And the planning commission did approve, recommend approval for this development. That concludes the planning department's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dufall. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter?
Councilman Carroll, Mr. Chairman, has his hand up. I think he has some questions.
Thank you, madam, and thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank, first thank the planning department for their support in this, because actually, there were three departments that played a big role, obviously, trying to put this together during a pandemic, you know, putting it together by itself is one thing, during a pandemic even more. Actually, I had my first Zoom meeting, or one of the Zoom meetings for this project, so it was a learning experience for me. But the planning department, the Code Department, Mr. Muhammad, and Community Development, Ms. Shaw, and last but not least, the community itself, played a major role in coming together, talking about this particular project. Just sort of background information, the Glenwood apartments have been in existence as long as the Lincoln Manor subdivision, over 50 years. This is the first major renovations for this building that I can remember since I've been a little boy going to Lincoln Manor subdivision. So it was obviously overdue, and the work from the Housing Authority and the developers have been fantastic to be able to work with us. So I believe we have a couple of, we have Ms. Shaw here, I know for a fact, and we have the Housing Authority, maybe the contractors. Mr. Wendell has given a lot of the logistics of the paint and how it's going to be, but as far as some of the milestones that I think the community and the city should know, if the Housing Authority and the project manager, Ms. Shaw, can kind of talk to that, that would be appreciative. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you for inviting me up just to discuss this project. This has been a long time coming. We've had many discussions and many meetings regarding the project at the Glenwood, and I also want to thank Wendell and Mr. Muhammad. So we had to have a Zoom meeting, and I'm sure the consultants want to thank Mr. Muhammad, because they were going to move forward, and had they moved forward without speaking to him first, they would have been in a pickle with us. So I would want to personally thank him for his efforts. But this project is going to rebuild the community and demolish some buildings that are obsolete at this point, and building them back, that they are making the community, like I said, better, making the living arrangements for those people who live there better. And we're still going to have our seniors segregated like they are now, but it's going to be new housing for them also. So I don't know if you want to say something?
It's good to have you on. My name is Barry Boldon, Executive Director for the Kenner Housing Authority. I'd like to thank everyone that's worked with us, Mr. Muhammad, all the directors that we had to work with, Councilman Carroll was a big help, even the people back in the neighborhood, and we appreciate everything that you've done for us in passing us along. It'll definitely help the community and bring up the value of the properties back there. So we appreciate everything that you've done.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dolores Windsor, President of Lincoln Manor Citizens Association, and I'm just here to thank everyone who was involved in this to help us out with these apartments back there. I'm so very grateful to everybody that pitched in and helped with this plan, and we're looking forward for this. that pitched in and helped with this plan, and we're looking forward for this. A change is going to come, and we truly thank everybody.
Al Morello 4260 East Toyota Drive, 5th District, 48 years. I support this. It's been talked about a lot. I also attend the Kenner Housing Authority meetings every month. But I do want to say this, since this is a planned unit development, we have a little more interest in what goes on at the Kenner Housing Authority. And I've always believed that the city should send a representative to their meetings and engage in what's going on at that Kenner Housing Authority. Because no matter what they say, this whole city has a vested interest in what happens with that agency. So I'd like to see someone, like I'm going to repeat it, I'd like to see someone represent the city at their meetings to come there and take notes and just stay on top of what's going on. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Can y'all hear me all right? Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Al, and I thank everyone who spoke today, particularly Ms. Washington from the Lincoln Manor subdivision. And Mr. Al, I will do my best to try to make note of the meetings, to be kept abreast of what's going on with this project, and obviously with the Housing Authority, with all the changes that we are doing. If Mr. Bordelone can just maybe give some dates or milestones from when the construction will start and anticipate it tentatively complete, that would be real helpful also. Thank you, sir.
Sure, sure. What we're looking at is, once this passes with you all, and we get the application submitted back to HUD, and we get a letter from the mayor approving everything, we're looking at sometime in March, end of March, beginning of April, when we can start the construction, tearing it down, and then building it back up. That's our anticipated date.
Well, thank you very much, sir. We look forward to working with you guys to get this project completed.
Yes, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Segura?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Bordelone?
Mr. Bordelone?
I have some questions for you, please.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Thank you. This does sound like a very good project. Being involved with the city for many, many years, I understand what's there now, and this is going to be a tremendous improvement. But I do have a couple of questions for clarification, since I was not involved in some of this part until we get to this point. Now, you're saying the Housing Authority is going to tear this down and build this new project, that was the way it was explained. Will the Housing Authority continue to maintain control over who stays, who gets the residents there?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay, so the construction company or whoever this developer is is just for the building of it, and then it stays in your control to administer who gets the residents?
Yes, sir. They'll be in partnership with us, but we still have main control of it.
Okay. Not dwelling on it too deep, but as with most new constructions, particularly of this type, certainly security is very much in the forefront. Will there be sufficient cameras installed throughout this complex for security purposes?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we definitely have a lot of cameras installed that'll record in our office, and we want to try to link something up to the police department also, where they can have access to it on their own.
That was my second question. Thank you. All right, thank you. Any other speakers?
Mr. President, I'd just like to add on to Councilman Segura's comments, and thank you, Councilman, for bringing that up. As Ms. Shaw mentioned, this will be done at a stage or at a development that the seniors, particularly that live there, where security is all of our concern, especially the concern of the seniors. And this development will have the proper fencing. It will have security that the present development does not have. So obviously, going into this, and with Mr. Muhammad's help, from the structure of it, that was a priority to not only build this and put this up, and with the attitude of that will do, the complete phase of construction, safety, all the phases of this to make in this development, a number-one development has been considered, and obviously going forward, we will continue to improve on it, from the new activity room, from the new management offices. All of these things will be brand-new. So, you know, I'm not sure if Ms. Shaw has anything more to add. She can, but that was a good question, Councilman. And we obviously want that to be in place for this development.
I just want to thank again everyone, and thanking the mayor for allowing his directors to move forward to make sure this project moves forward correctly. Like I said, we could have had a big problem with HUD had we not taken the time for all the directors to get in and do this. And I want to especially thank Councilman Carroll also for his time and effort in making sure he addressed all the citizens' concerns, because they were reaching out to him about how we were going to tear down, when was going to happen. So he addressed all their concerns to make sure that this project moves correctly and according to all of HUD's guidelines. So I want to thank the mayor and Councilman Carroll for all of your efforts. We really appreciate it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Segura, to close the public hearing. Council members, please vote.
Councilman McKenney? Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to close your hearing.
We have a motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Segura, to approve.
Councilmembers, please vote. Councilmember McKenney? Councilmember Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to adopt. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution affirming the City of Kenner's support of Kenner Discovery Health Sciences Academy capital outlay application and requesting the Jefferson delegation to support said application.
We have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilman Wilmot, to approve. Do we have a comment? Do we have a speaker?
Thank you. Councilchair, Councilman Wilmot, are you going to open with any comments?
Yes, I will.
I'm sorry. I saw your hand go up.
I appreciate it. Thank you. If it's all right, Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
This is a resolution that has been filed. I think most of the council persons probably got emails from various folks from Kenner Discovery, which is a great school that's right in the heart of Kenner. So they ask, and they have, they're planning to design a 28,000-square-foot multipurpose facility at the new school, and it's estimated it's going to cost somewhere between about $6 million. The state, you can ask for capital outlay money, and this is what this is doing. They're asking for capital outlay of $3 million. As a result, they already have a project ID number and a capital outlay number, which is critical to the request. And if you don't ask, you don't get it, right? So they're asking, and I'm asking that all of our colleagues here on the council support this resolution to improve the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Excuse me. Yes, I just want to say that I think that this, obviously, Kenner Discovery is near and dear to my heart, as three of my four children attend. I think that, you know, this application, this opportunity for the City of Kenner to support the community and assist Kenner Discovery in moving forward with this application is critical to the success of the school and it moving forward. So, thank you.
Councilman Segura?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I think, you know, it's pretty clear that we're all going to be in support of this, and I do appreciate that the process is moving quickly for y'all to get your application in, and some of the work's already been done with planning. So we look forward at some point for that to be built and be part of the city. I know from just general conversation with some of my colleagues and administration, Mr. Mayor, how do you feel about this?
The administration supports it.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of it until it got to the agenda.
I'm sorry?
I said I was not aware of it until it got to the agenda, but of course, the administration, myself, we support it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I didn't know if you had anything else. That's it. Do you want to, I mean, I know we're all saying we're far, so you've already said that. Okay. And I just also, courtesy to the chief, I know he don't generally chime in, but it is another big event that you'll have to police, so if it's finished.
No, no. I support it. I believe every school should have some kind of multipurpose facility for...
Chief, if you could bring that mic closer to you.
Yeah.
I'm finished.
Are you asking us if we want to add our names to it?
Well, I don't...
Usually, usually in the past, pieces of legislation like this that are important to the whole city of Kenner would have the mayor and the chief on it. So, I didn't know about it until it got to the agenda. I absolutely, positively support it. I would like to have my name on it, if the council could be so kind, and I believe the chief, I mean, he can speak for himself, usually that's what happens. The chief and the mayor go on it also.
Okay, well, the author, I'm sure...
Councilman Wilmot, are you okay with that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, Chief.
The clerk will add your names to it.
Thank you.
And just for note, this was drafted up, I think, just right before the deadline yesterday, so it was very, and it got filed just right before the deadline, so it was a rush. But we wanted to get it in because there is a time delay. November 1st is the deadline to have letters of support and so forth. We wanted to get this in way before, so we make sure we're timely. So, thank you.
Councilman Segura, are you finished with your comments, sir? Okay, Councilman Branigan has his hand up, sir.
I just want to say that I think it's important for all of the schools in the city of Kenner to offer all of their students the best facilities possible, and having a multi-use facility where you can use it for athletics and gatherings is a very important piece of the puzzle for those students in that school. I will be supporting this.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Ms. Newton for coming here today and congratulate her for her reposition with the Kenner Discovery School. As everyone knows, the Kenner Discovery has their name in the City of Kenner, in their name. So obviously, as a City of Kenner, it is our job and responsibility to support all institutions, particularly education institutions in the City of Kenner. As I said in the past, when we had an ordinance, a resolution or something to support Washington Elementary, it is part of our responsibility to always support the schools, the education system throughout the City of Kenner. So it should be something that we all should be proud of. It is the future. It is the children that represent the City of Kenner, and who will someday be here where we are. So again, Ms. Newton, thank you very much, and obviously, any other support that is needed from the council as individuals, I'm sure we will. And it was an honor to be able to have the pre-K of the Kenner Discovery School in District 1 in our facilities, with the support of the mayor, the administration, and we look forward to supporting the school in the near future. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I believe that there's another member of the public that would like to speak. Ma'am, if you could come up to the podium. Ms. Newton, does the lady behind you want to speak on the matter? Thank you.
You'll have three minutes. Anybody, some of y'all have come in late. Anybody that wishes to speak tonight, please get on the list over here and just give us your name and address. We appreciate it.
Natalie Newton. I'm here representing Discovery Schools as their Director of Strategic Development, but I'm also a Kenner resident residing at 31 Monte Carlo. I first want to start by thanking all of the elected officials in here, the council, the mayor, and the police chief for being ever supportive of the continued growth of Kenner Discovery. Mayor Zahn, you actually contributed parish funds to build our first, what I would call, performance overhang at our tiny campus with 400 students on main. And the list goes on and on of the collaborative effort, and I hope to continue that as we all move forward to create better education and quality education for the children in Jefferson Parish, particularly the City of Kenner. Just to give you an idea of why this facility is needed, due to our growth numbers, right now we educate over 2,400 students. 2,100 of those students are in our Kenner campuses, and 1,500 of those students are Kenner residents. We continue to grow. By the year 2023, we anticipate educating over 3,500 students, and we would really love to have somewhere where all of our student body, our culture is very important, can come and collaborate, as well as educate all of our teachers in one facility. So it will have multip purposes. We're probably also one of the largest employers in Kenner. Right now, we have 270 employees, over 270 employees, where we are now headquartered at the beautiful new campus. Those numbers will grow to over 400 by 2022 with our anticipated growth. As we continue to look for ways to improve providing quality education, again, I'd just like to thank everyone for their support as we move forward with that mission to create a better community. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Angela Cochran. I reside at 2801 Kent Avenue, actually in Metairie, but I'm actually the PTO president at Kenner Discovery this year. So I just wanted to say, what Natalie was expressing, that I just wanted to say how much we need a multipurpose building here on our campus, and that we would greatly appreciate the continued support of you, the council, and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Council members, let's vote. By roll call.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Motion passes six zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,752, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Consolidated Traffic Controls Incorporated to provide solar power flashing school zone speed limit signs in accordance with letter bid number 20-1963, and an amount not to exceed $5,400 for the Department of Public Works.
We have a motion by Councilman Branigan, seconded by Councilman Hayes, to approve. Council members, let's vote by roll call.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Motion passes six zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,753, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Polydine Incorporated for a contract to provide polymer on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 20-6559, and an amount not to exceed $74,175 for the Department of Waste Water.
A motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilman Branigan, to approve.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Motion passes six zero. Item 15C is a resolution ratifying change order number five to add an additional 60 calendar days to the agreement time for the Department of Community Development.
Motion by Councilman Carroll, seconded by Councilman Segura, to approve.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll?
Yea.
Councilman Segura?
Yea.
Motion passes six zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance adopting, superseding, and amending capital budget for the City of Kenner for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021. Item 16B is a third supplemental bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $35 million and no dollars of sales tax. $35 million and no dollars of sales tax refunding bonds, Series 2020, of the city of Kenner, state of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of a general bond ordinance prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Item 16C is an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,757, adopted August 6th, 2020, to delete the word "annually" from Section 1. Item 16D is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the state of Louisiana Office of Facility Planning and Control, FPC, for Lincoln Manor subdivision drainage improvement, FPNC, project number 50-MF-1-20-01, for the Department of Public Works. Item 16E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive proposal from Beacon Air Conditioning, and an amount not to exceed $9,998 to replace a shorted 30-ton compressor on the main chiller for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16F is an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase for parts and labor in the amount of $12,736 from Covington Sales and Service Incorporated for the Department of Parkways. Item 16G is an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted by the city of Kenner, Louisiana, on March 17th, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending and rezoning Lot 6A, Square 100, Veteran Heights subdivision from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R3, 3 and 4 Family Residential, and directing, authorizing, and empowering the planning director for the city of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the city of Kenner, Louisiana. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees. Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk, and Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody that the 2020 census deadline has been extended to October 5th, which is right here, so please participate and be counted if you haven't done so already. It means a big difference to the money that this region will get if you participate or you don't participate, so please do so. Thank you.
Councilman Cowell?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to personally thank all of the residents here today for attending this meeting. Obviously, there's no place like home, no place that I would rather be than the council chambers, but that is, that is, that is going to come, it's just a little time that we have to go through to be able to get in there safely, so with your support, I'm not really a big IT or social media person, or Zoom person, I like that face-to-face, what we do, and this is, this is how it should be, and I look forward to, as we get better, we the state and we the city of Kenner get better, to be able to have that relationship back again in the Kenner council. So, thank you for coming out, thank you for enduring with all of the things that you have to do for this meeting, and particularly, I want to thank the Punch and Train Center, Mr. Barone and his staff, the general services, and all the Kenner departments that have made it possible, the mayor with the foresight, with his administration, to be able to change as we change with this pandemic, and that's exactly what we have to do going forward for the city of Kenner, so thank everyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
I also have a comment. Today's an important day, October 1st. With the administration, working with emergency management, along with code enforcement, along with Public Works, it's a good day because anybody that is looking to reduce their flood insurance, this is an important day. Because of our good Class 6 rating from FEMA, the, if you're in an AE zone, you should be receiving a 20% reduction in your flood insurance. If you're in an X zone, like I am, it's a 10%. Make sure you understand what we're saying here, and make sure you get with your insurance company to take advantage of this, really. But again, this is a, this is a good move by the city administration, and there are very few cities in the United States that have a Class 6 rating, so again, something to be proud of. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Anyone else?
Chief Glazer?
Item 18 is new business, we have none. Item 19?
Right, Chief Glazer wants to say something.
Okay, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, she can't see me, that's why I had Councilman Carroll walk down. Just wanted to make the public aware that this Tuesday, October 6th, is National Night Out Against Crime. We have a much smaller turnout this year with parties in Kenner, but there are a few families and blocks that actually want to have outings, so we have about 12 of them, so we will be making our rounds to these 12 with a few policemen and myself, so if anybody wants to participate and have us pass by, just call our community relations office at 712-2200, and just ask for them, and we'll get you on the list, and we'll make a brief stop as we make our rounds throughout the city. This is a wonderful way for us to interact with the community, and it's a wonderful way for us to kind of encourage neighbors to know each other's name, and if we're the last person to find out what goes on in these neighborhoods, the residents, as I always say, know who belongs and who doesn't, and we rely on this interaction to get our job done and keep the city safe. So, it's this Tuesday, October 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Item 18 is new business, we have none. Item 19 is unfinished business, and a motion to reconsider or remove from a table position, we have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Now, anybody that wants to address the council tonight should be on the list of speakers that Madam Clerk has. Again, you'll be limited to three minutes, and please state your name and address. Thank you.
If I could ask the speakers, in-between speakers, please allow the gentleman to clean the podium before you step up to the podium. Please be courteous in that concern. Mr. and Mrs. Wayne Hardy, would you like to speak together, or would you like to individually speak? You get three minutes, would your husband like three minutes, and would you like three minutes? You want a total of three for both of you? Okay, go ahead, step up to the podium, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Wayne, and my wife, Wanda Hardy, we live at 3245 Grand Lake Boulevard in Kenner. We're here today because of a situation that we encountered a while back after we purchased a lot from Kenner at an auction. During the purchase of our lots, we had no problem with saying that, you know, we had any problem building on these, on this land. As we started building on 30th Street in Kenner, we went through the steps one by one, clearing everything to make sure everything was in proper order. When we got to completion of it, when we started to try to get our sewage connected, they told us there was no sewage on 30th Street. We were trying to find out, and I need the help from the council and from the mayor, why were we given permission to build a house on 30th Street when there's no sewage on 30th Street? There's no way that we can get a final inspection on our houses because there's no sewage there. No one told us about this until we were completed. I spoke several times to Ms. Joanne Madison, I think it is, about it, she told me that engineers were working on a plan, do the piping, run the pipes to our house. We went round and round for month after month, and then finally, I received a call from me, this past Friday, I received a call from a guy, he's a deputy city attorney, Eric Mun, saying that there was no sewage there, and I would have to pay for the sewage. I don't believe that it is my fault that I have to pay for the sewage when I went through the proper channels, I went through everything, I paid for connection fees for my sewage, why did I pay a connection fee for sewage if there's no sewage there? Why was I given a permit to build on 30th Street if there's no sewage there? The sewage is at each end of the corners, Bryan Bridge and Washington, which is about 130 feet from where our houses are at. Mr. Eric told me that it would cost the neighborhood $50,000 to do that sewage there. He wanted me to pay the $50,000 for the sewage, and then give it to Kenner. It makes no sense to me that I purchased a lot from Kenner, that states on this paper, there's nothing wrong with it, there's paved streets, there's lights, there's electric, they don't have on this paper that there's no sewage, like they have on some other properties on this paper. When I went through the steps with the core thing, enforcement, I went through each step just like every other citizen does in Kenner before building. Everyone took my money, gave me all the permits, I have my building permit, and everything, giving me permission to build. You should not be able to give someone permission to build when there's no sewage.
I'm sorry, so that's time limit, we owe, everybody's limited to three minutes.
All I ask is, can please get some help from me, the city council, the mayor, on this, on this problem here.
The mayor has a comment.
Yeah, we're ready, we're ready, we're ready, we're finished.
We are 90% finished, and we can't move into the houses because we have no sewage. They give us electric and water, but there's no sewage.
The mayor?
That's not fair.
I don't have a comment, but Mr. Mohammed does, I don't know if you could see him over there, but he has a comment because he's been working on this with legal. Mr. Mohammed?
Mr. and Ms. Hardy, I'd be more than happy to sit down and work with you guys to try to give you a solution, but the plumber was responsible for locating the sewer tap before he started construction. We will bend over back with you and the city of Kenner to help you, I'm going to give you my business card, and I'd appreciate if you give me a call Monday, and we'll do what we can to try to help you out, but I understand that Tom with Public Works is trying to work with you, and I'm going to extend the olive branch, and I promise you we're going to go above and beyond, but there might be some consequences because your plumber didn't do a very good job of locating the sewer before he started the project, which is, which is the first thing all plumbers do, so we will help you, okay? Thank you.
Next.
Mr. Larry Daigle is next. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Larry Daigle, 4122 Tulane Drive, Kenner, Louisiana. I'm here for a bunch of thank yous. As you all know, I own the Saints truck, and after that parade that we had in Kenner, my wife and I decided to go back around where the parade started, to go home, and them streets were so clean, you wouldn't have believed they had a parade. But anyway, I'm here to thank Mayor Benzon for pointing me in the right direction, we had some problems over the weekend, contractors tore down my shed and left it on the driveway, and nobody wanted to pick it up, so he gave me a number, so I called Sidney Torres, his secretary, she came out, Ms. Julie, she didn't come out, but she called me back, Ms. Julie, and as soon as she hung up the phone, Sidney called me, he said, "We're going to take care of your business." So I just want to tell the mayor, the council, the administration, y'all did a hell of a job, hired Sidney Torres. If it wouldn't have been for him, these streets wouldn't be clean. This is the cleanest I've ever seen the city of Kenner. And Mr. Mohammed, thank you for doing a great job with the city, we really appreciate it. And Mr. Constable, thank you for coming, I look forward to seeing you. Good luck. Anybody got any questions for me? And I also want to say, I do have the Saints truck, and for you gentlemen and ladies, we have the LSU truck too now, we got it out the shop yesterday. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Daigle.
Mr. Daigle, don't tell Councilman Branigan about that, he'll want to ride around in the LSU truck.
Go to Daigle's.
Mr. Al Morella, please state your name and address for the record.
Make sure you get close to the mic so we can hear you.
I need to lower my voice out to some of y'all because you're muffling in here, man. Al Morella, 4260 East Royal Drive, 5th District, 48 years. First, I want to welcome everybody back, it's good to be back. I want to commend Michael Claus and Adam Campos for an outstanding job for keeping these meetings going, even though I think we should have been back face-to-face a long time ago. Now, I want to talk about the unpaid property taxes that's owed to the city account by the Espinay Mall, okay? $172,735.10 has been owed to the city of Kenner by the Espinay Mall since 1992. Now, for 2019, $76,422.43, for a grand total of $249,157.53. I want to know what's going on in order to recover these revenues, and I understand the new owner is one Mike Kohan, and I want to know where is the city going to recover these revenues? Can you imagine what would happen if a citizen didn't pay their property taxes for almost 30 years? Now, next item, I understand, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, that we brought in an outside contractor to trim the trees on the neutral ground on East Royal Drive. They trim the trees, they stack the branches up in piles all on neutral ground, and they set there for almost a week, and then I find out that the contractor stated that was not the scope of the work that they were brought in here for. So then we had to get our Parks and Recreation Department to go pick up all those bundles of branches. This was not the proper time, man, to be bringing in outside contractors to do work that we could do in-house. We should have had our Parks and Recreation Department do this job in the first place. Now, if I'm wrong about this, somebody please correct me. If not, I'll take any questions, any comments anybody has for me. Nobody? Go ahead, ma'am.
You're wrong. So, in the beginning, when I gave the, you know, our mayor comments, I guess you missed it in there, CARES paid for that, so federal funds paid for the outside contractors to come in, and I'm glad it worked. You saw the tree limbs on the neutral ground. I told each one of these council people, "Don't call me when you see the tree limbs on the neutral ground," because I want them on the neutral ground, I want the people to see what's going on, so, thank you, it worked. He sees that it got cut, because sometimes you don't notice when a tree gets cut. You all know that, you were all told, "Do not call me when you see the tree limbs on there." I don't think they stayed out there for a week, I think they stayed out there for a couple of days. We didn't have, which I said earlier, we didn't have enough personnel to do that, but we did save some money by sending our personnel out to pick them up after the residents saw that we were doing something, so I'm glad it worked. Thank you for bringing that to my attention and the people in the audience's attention.
Excuse me, ma'am, I can't hear you, ma'am, can you talk up a little bit and talk into the mic, because you're coming in mighty muffling, I need to loan you my voice.
It was paid for by CARES, I said that early on, that was what we wanted to do, we didn't pay for that, CARES paid for that, the $8 million that came in, you heard that? Our city hall employees, I said earlier, have been, not everybody has been back to work, we're slowly bringing some of those people that can come back to work, back to work. It worked by you seeing the tree limbs on the neutral grounds, because I told these council people, that's what I wanted, it worked. You saw them getting cut. Sometimes people don't notice trees getting cut, but now you notice because you saw the tree limbs, so the whole purpose was for that to happen. The people that are here tonight, I'm sure, some people may not realize that trees are cut throughout the city of Kenner until you see that, so we had our Public Works, our field crews, all of our field crews, go out there and pick up the tree limbs to save some of that CARES money so we could, you know, send it to other needed things in the city, so I appreciate you coming up here and clearing that up for everybody.
And that's why I stated in my opening, that if I was wrong, anybody could correct me, ma'am. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Angela Cochran? Angela Cochran, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Angela Cochran, PTO President of Kenner Discovery. I live at 2801 Kent Avenue, Metairie. I'm not a resident of Kenner now, but I have been. My daughter has been dancing with the Kenner Recreation Department for past seven years, is on the Kenner Dance Team that represents Kenner in Mardi Gras parades, and she is a senior at Kenner Discovery as captain of the cheer team. So you can see why I feel I'm invested in this decision you've made to keep fans out of Moss Bernalino, which happens to be our home field stadium. I've been writing letters since June with other parents across our state who are all part of a Facebook group called Families of Louisiana High School Athletics and Extracurricular Activities. To everyone in the state, from our governor, his office, the LHSAA, Mr. Bonine, Bessie, and our state representatives to get the Friday night lights back on. Mr. Bonine, the executive director of the LHSAA, said in his statement at the Capitol that there is no reason that we can't safely put fans in the stands, especially parents and grandparents of seniors. He even referenced being creative and placing seating in end zones of the fields if need be. I understand we have social distance, we have to social distance, and I know you won't find a parent here with our school that disagrees with you. Since March, we have done as you have asked, the government has asked, and that's to relearn, wash our hands, to wash our hands, stay home, social distance, keep six feet away, and now wear this mask. The governor has placed us in phase three. The Treasure Chest Casino, where people go to gamble, which is a recreational indoor activity, has been open since the end of May and is now at 75% capacity. LSU opened up their stadium to 20,000-plus fans, 75% capacity in our restaurants. All the entrances to Walmart are now open. Schools are now open. Bars are open, and so it's time to open up our parks. The stadium in Jefferson Parish are overbooked because we whipped triple headers starting at 10:00 AM on Saturdays because they are allowing the tendons and stands. I get your employees have been home since March and maybe fear contributed to them not wanting to return to work, but it's time. The kids need some normalcy of their, some sense of normalcy back in their lives, and recreation is a big part of that. The employees you have working for the first couple of weeks running Moss Beralino won't be doing anything different, so why are we waiting to week three to reevaluate? The same guidelines will have to be followed. You will still have to disinfect the stands, the bathrooms, and the field house. It's an outside stadium where medical professions have said time and time again are safe, especially if we social distance and wear these masks. I'm a mom of a senior cheerleader. I've had the privilege of being a mom of a football player who had the season that will go down in our parish history. So don't take this opportunity away from my daughter, her teammates, to have their parents, family, classmates, and faculty watch them have their year two. Corona has stolen enough from these kids. It's time to get normalcy back. Thank you.
Your three minutes is up, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? I guess, questions?
Uh, Councilman Carroll, would you like to speak?
I, I'm gonna, thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna hold my comments until after. I think there are some other parents that have some things to say.
Okay. No problem. Thank you. Amanda Ward, please state your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Brett Bonifons. I'm the head football coach at Barnable High School. I live in, uh, 2149 Valentine Court, New Orleans, but my, obviously I work in Kenner, so it's very important to us. Um, I, I'm gonna piggyback on what that young lady said. Um, our football program at Barnable caters to some of the most economically depressed young people in, in the, in the state of Louisiana. And for us to be able to maintain that program, we need to actually make some type of money during football games in order to help get our kids what they need. Uh, you look at, because of COVID, we lost $9,000 worth of funds over the last six months, just for strictly for our football program. And so that, we, we had a scrimmage last week. We were able to seat 233 people safely on just one side of Joseph Yenney Stadium. Uh, we had, we had very stringent protocols for swiping their foreheads. We had very stringent protocols for COVID symptoms, um, very good social distancing, and we sat 233 people. If you look at the city of New Orleans right next door to us, they seat 250 people at stadiums. Uh, East Jefferson Stadium can hold 1,000 people safely right now. Uh, all we ask is that from, for Moss Beralino, where we love to play our home games because it allows our students to come. If we play at EJ, it, it's a little bit too much travel for some of our high school students to make, but they can walk to Moss Beralino. So we would love them to be able to come, at least up to 250 people. I believe 250 people can seat, can be seated very safely in Moss Beralino Stadium. And so we ask you to reconsider the ban for weeks one and two. Uh, we were supposed to play actually tonight there, but, uh, our, the team we played decided not to play this year. But playing next week in Moss Beralino where, where our kids can come and watch us will severely help not only our, our ability to pay the refs and to travel for the games, but also just our kids to have school pride, uh, school pride, which is something Barnable High School very sorely needs and very sorely deserves. Forgive my voice, please. I came directly off the practice field to come to, to speak to y'all. I apologize about my voice. But, uh, but thank you very much for listening. Are there any questions about anything? Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Greg Teft, please state your name and address for the record. You have three
Uh, Greg Teft, 3720 West Viola Drive, Kenner. Uh, I just have a couple of things. Number one is, I want to thank the administration for the move on the break tags. And the reason for that is that at, right now, it is going to be more convenient. I've noticed that there's a few that's going to be open on Saturdays, which was always a problem, and are open later than the break tag station that we have. So I think that is going to benefit the residents of Kenner and to get their break tags. So this move, I thought, was a very, very good move and it is very convenient time-wise, and I think it's very convenient vocation-wise. So it's a win-win both ways. So I think that was good. The one thing that I want to comment is a couple of coun-, either last council meeting, a couple more, because as I get older, I keep forgetting where I'm at, I'm talking about business development. I know that you can't really tell people or say a whole lot when you've got things coming on the horizon, but there's got to be a way that you could at least let citizens know that we are moving in a direction or, or what progress that we might be making. Because that helps us to better understand that we are being progressive and that we are moving in the right direction. So, and then the other thing I want to say is that it is good to see everybody in person again. Zoom is fine, but it, um, you know, you don't have the interaction and you don't see and, you know, I always feel better when I can see people and talk to people and, you know, eye to eye. And, and I think that this is good and I'm glad that, um, y'all and the administration worked out to where we could start having meetings where the public can attend and, and be involved. That's all I have to say unless y'all have a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Teft, we will do something very similar to what you're asking for at the next council meeting. We will talk about the Atlantis Project because we've talked a little bit about that, but we couldn't talk about all the particulars, especially when it was out for, um, for RFP. So now that's in, now that we've sent us the letter to the state, I'm hoping the next council meeting, we'll be able to go into detail. I'm hoping to have the Atlantis people here so we can do that. So yes, we agree with you. As we work and get close to it or becomes finalized, that's when we're going to share most of those things. And I think that's what you're looking for at the next council
Dolores Windsor, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Dolores Windsor, 1521 Mayfield Street, Kenner, Louisiana. President of Lincoln Manor Civic Association. Uh, I'm here to speak on Audience 16D. First of all, I would like to thank State Representative Joe Stagni for securing much-needed funds for the Lincoln Manor Drainage Project. We would be very grateful if the city puts up the necessary funds for this project. It is to our understanding that if these funds are not used, we will lose them. And we don't want to lose these funds. The drainage project is very important to the Lincoln Manor community and also other communities surrounding Lincoln Manor. So we asking you all to please, please put up these funds for this project. Thank you.
Council Chairman, can our CEO address that along with, uh, what, what Ms. Doris said, along with, I'm sure Councilman Carroll wants to add a few words, because Councilman Carroll, myself, and Joe Stagni had had a, um, a Zoom meeting on, on what this, what was just discussed. And our CEO has been working very closely with Councilman Carroll's office and I think soon to be Councilman Lee's office with the parish, as I spoke to Councilman Lee the other day. So that's something we're going to put together with you, Councilman Carroll. But, Debra?
Thank you. And as you can see, Ms. Windsor, uh, the councilmen and I are pointing at each other. No, you go. No, you go. So first off, I want to say, Ms. Windsor, it's a pleasure to see you. We spoke with you last week. I hope every, all the trees and everything got picked up the way it was supposed to. Good. Thank you for letting us know. Vis a vis this particular project, Ms. Windsor, what you see on this agenda here is actually the contract with the state to perform the services. So we have already identified the funding and we know we are on the fast track. The Lincoln Manor overall drainage study has multiple projects within it. So what we did, uh, under Councilman Carroll and Representative Stagni, we had a meeting where we literally met with the engineers, looked at the entire map, looked at all the different sub-projects and said, okay, we have enough money for this project. And if, and if we get a really good price, we might be able to cover this project too. So what we're basically doing is, is we're, we're getting a contract with the state to do the actual projects we're talking about so that we can get out as quickly as possible. So we're not going to lose that money. We're going to make sure that project gets done and, um, just we'll be happy to keep you posted as we go along. Councilman Carroll?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Foshee. And, uh, Ms., Ms. Dolores, thank you for coming today. Obviously, we want to thank State Representative Joe Stagni for his support for the funding that we had to get. And also the support of the mayor, the administration, Ms. Foshee, and all the people involved in, uh, making sure that we move forward with this to support the Lincoln Manor subdivision. Uh, it's been long in coming. It was one of the first projects that came about, I believe, at the time when Councilman Wilmot was on the council. So obviously, we're looking forward, looking forward to this. Uh, we, like the mayor said, we have been having Zoom meetings as it relates to this. And, uh, the percentage that we have to pay has been, you know, allocated, has been, have been found to be able to support this. And I believe once this gets started, State Representative Stagni has said that there may be additional funding, as Ms. Foshee alluded to, to be able to support even more another project to support this, you know, the drainage situation. I'd like to also thank the, uh, Public Works Director, Mr. Tom, for his support with this, his expertise for the, uh, to be able to, to put forth a project, not just to spend the money, because that can, that is easily done, but to be able, to be able to look at it along with his support staff to ensure that we do, we pick the right project to support the entire subdivision. So as we move forward, we obviously want to continue to get the support from the Lincoln Manor Civic Association, all of the mayor's administration and staff, and my, and with the part that I can do to make sure that we, along with council, with the State Representative Stagni, are continuing to get the funding that's available. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman?
Ms. Stephanie Colomer?
Councilman Wilmot wants to make a speech.
Uh, one moment, ma'am. Councilman Wilmot would like to speak. Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yeah, that's been a long time coming and, and I appreciate all the efforts that are happening. Uh, it must have been about six years ago or so that it was, the drainage issue was identified in Lincoln Manor area that impacts three, three other, two or three other subdivisions nearby. Uh, the, the canals actually drained from south to north and it bottlenecks right there. So it creates a huge problem. It was identified by engineers, uh, as a result of your civic association president way back when. He made numerous complaints and he wouldn't give up. Bless him. I know he passed away, uh, but, but, but a wonderful man. He pushed and he made it apparent to the engineers and myself and others. And we had numerous meetings over that issue and we finally got some funding going in that right direction. And of course, the ball has not been dropped, but, uh, Representative Stagni has picked it up and ran to the goal line. So thank him very, very much. Uh, and I do thank him. And, and of course, Ms. Windsor, I appreciate your efforts as well. I know you have been very active in the community and making good things happen there. So thank you and God bless.
Okay, ma'am. You may step up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Stephanie Colomer and my address is 5 Holy Cross Place in Kenner, 70065. And, um, I am a lifelong resident of Kenner and I am also the mom of a Kenner Discovery High School senior football player who I very, very much want to watch play. Um, our first home game is, uh, on the 9th of October and I really want to watch him play in our home field. Um, I simply don't understand why, um, that is even in question. Everyone else in our area is open. The Parks and Rec is up and running and, um, we, we need to get back to work. Our kids need this. Our kids need some normalcy. And I, I know I speak on behalf of many, many parents who could not be here tonight when I say that we want to watch our kids on the field, whether it's, you know, football or cheer or dance or the band. We want to be there. We want to see it. And there's simply no reason why we shouldn't be allowed to. We need to open up. Everybody needs to get back to work. We're in phase three. It's safe to do so. Thank you.
Rodney Colomer? Okay, thank you. Richard Brown, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Richard Brown, 824 Sessions Lane, Kenner. First off, I'm glad you're having in-person meetings again and congratulations on that. But I want to especially congratulate the administration, the council, and Adam Campo on the Zoom meetings that you had. You folks pulled those off phenomenally well. They went extremely well. I've got to confess, I got used to them. I was almost hoping to continue with it, but you did a very good job. I know Adam Campo had a lot to do with it. Everybody who put it together needs to be commended. I'm glad you're meeting again in person, but I hope you get back to City Hall right away. The acoustics in this building are horrible. You cannot understand what people are saying. So please, let's get back in City Hall as soon as we can. And also, let's reopen the city as soon as we can. Um, I've got one question, which I guess is to be directed to the mayor about something I think to come up at the next meeting, some, some, um, tax resolutions that will be voted on to put some tax propositions on the ballot. I think one of those is a road millage of some sort. And I don't have the details in front of me, but I recall just a few years ago, there was a road tax that I think applied to roads. Maybe we had taken over from Jefferson Parish, but the, the roads had been paid for. The bond issue or whatever money was used to, to, to purchase roads was paid for and that money was just being used for other purposes. Is that what is being renewed or if not, exactly what is the road millage that, that the council plans to vote on, that the public will be voting on in an upcoming election?
It's a, it's a simple renewals. It's renewals, no change. Just renewals.
Okay. But it's for, it's actually for road expenses?
No, sir.
No.
I'm sorry. It's every- It's everything, Richard, except roads. The roads were renewed, I think, two years ago. So what's coming up is a straight-up renewal of all the other millages. There'll be fire, sewer, garbage, and general alimony, right, basically everything else. All the other property taxes are going up for straight, straight-up renewal, no increase, just renewal.
Okay.
But the drainage, I mean, I'm sorry, the street, the roads that you're talking about, it's in an off year. So I think that wasn't last year, that was the year before.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Foshee. That's all.
Are there any?
One more. Um, Mr. Siddiqui, is he still here? Mr. Siddiqui, do you want to speak?
I don't, I don't think there are any more speakers. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Councilman Hayes? I'd, I'd like to just talk about the situation at Muscatolino. Did Councilman Carroll, I don't want to go before Councilman Carroll.
You can go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I think it's no doubt that we support Kenner Discovery School. Um, Ms. Newton came here tonight, and we supported a $3 million project, uh, or $6 million project, but $3 million of that that they're asking for. She pointed out that, as a parish councilman, I appreciate that, that I supported Kenner Discovery back then also, on the parish council. Um, I think each and every one of us have supported Kenner Discovery. Kenner Discovery is one of a few schools that are playing at Muscatolino. They could have had fans, just like everyone else, on the third week. My recreation director slash my, one of my deputy CEOs at field operations, Chad Pittfield, has had numerous conversations with some parents from Kenner Discovery. I know we have updated you all on what's going on with the games. I said earlier, we have a personnel issue. Um, we just recently purchased some equipment, which was yesterday, to clean outdoor stadiums. I think some of you all saw that when we were talking to the, to the reps here. We brought down on some CARES money. So we're doing everything we, we can. Other schools are adapting to it. This is the first time tonight, and I appreciate the coach from Bonneville coming, but Mr. Pittfield, and he's going to speak in just a few moments, Mr. Pittfield has spoken to the athletic director of Bonneville. Our understanding, and Mr. Pittfield will verify this, is Bonneville's athletic director has no problem. Curtis has had no issue. As we're sitting here, about an hour ago, Haynes started playing a game at Muscatolino with no fans, but by the third week, we would do, we would have fans. Kenner Discovery, and he is a friend, Mr. Joel Fisher, he's actually my neighbor, has sent an email out, and also to our recreation department. Ken Discovery's, I guess the recreation department, or Joel Fisher, has chosen to go across the lake to Slidell, and also to Fisher, even on the third week. So that's a little puzzling that we sit here tonight, maybe these parents don't know that, I don't know, but now you do, that on the third week, they've still chosen, and Mr. Pittfield will correct me if I'm wrong, because I might have the, I might have the timeline and that stuff, but they will be able to play with fans on the third week. I believe they'll be playing at Fisher Stadium in Lafitte on that third week. If you listen to the comment, "Open up," that's absurd. We are open. Um, a game is going on right now. I just recently talked to you all, probably during the week and also today, in a Zoom agenda meeting, that we will be looking at opening fall programs, we're in the fall, fall programs, opening back up the gymnastics center. We had COVID, guys, I don't think it's a big surprise to anybody, we had to pull back a little bit on some things, and recreation is an extra. It's important, but it's an extra, so we had to keep the kids separated. But Mr. Pittfield is working on getting the gymnastics center open up, which will have gymnastics, karate, and he'll tell you the, the third, the third thing that's there. We will do those three things. In the spring, after the first of the year, we're looking at doing a delayed basketball season, and also, of course, baseball. So the, a lot of schools understand what we have to do. I believe, and Mr. Pittfield will correct me if I'm wrong, that Kenner Discovery parents had to watch their kids play last Saturday, this past Saturday, from the parking lot at Joe Yenney Stadium. So to hear the comments that Muscatolino's the only one not open, again, is a little absurd. I, I just want to clear the air, so anybody watching this, it's not just Muscatolino, but we're working toward that on the third weekend. If you would allow Mr. Pittfield to add a few more comments, because he's been working with a lot of the schools, and he knows a lot more than what I do about this. Mr. Pittfield?
Thank you, Ma-
Testa?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you're absolutely correct. I mean, look, to, to say that we haven't done our due diligence is, 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 is beyond. We have spoken and dealt with not only the parish level, Mr. Carl Nene and I have a relationship prior, that we have been speaking in reference to East Jefferson, West Jefferson, as well as the Fisher Stadium, which is run by the Jefferson Parish School Board, about what they're doing. Um, it is very well understood that Muscatolino Stadium is a very small stadium. Um, we do not really meet the, the needs and the demands of the LHSAA, which is the Louisiana High School Athletic Association, even when it comes from fans and spectators walking into our bleacher systems. Um, we're talking about a four-foot entranceway, a four-foot handicap ramp, people are going to be bumping into each other. Um, you know, look, we're doing our best. Uh, there, there's nobody that's worked in recreation prior that's, that's had to go and decon an entire facility after every single game or event. Uh, this includes bleachers, handrails, restrooms, press boxes, microphones, down markers, locker rooms, benches, the field markers, the scoreboard controller. This is something that has to be wiped down even by hand cloth wipes, um, as several of you were here yesterday. Look, folks, we're not even just talking to our medical staff, we're reaching out, as I said, to schools. Uh, we have professional athletes involved in this, who want nothing more, as the same as we do, is to see the kids on the fields and to get cheered. But we're not going to open it up if we're going to subject you to something that we can't do, the basic needs that the state is requiring, which is to decon that facility. We are having to work towards that, just like we're easing up, just like we ease down. My staff needs to get trained on how to do this. So we need some facilities and some activities to occur, such as what's going on tonight, where we can start at a smaller level. So tonight, after the game, my guys will probably work until midnight tonight, while they decon the press box, while they decon the locker rooms, while they decon the benches, while they decon the face, uh, the fence posts, the down markers, the pylons, everything. We need to start them at a smaller scale, so we can work up to that. We've said week three from the start. I've spoken to all of the athletic directors, Mr. Bonafont and I had phone calls, because we were trying to juggle scheduling, because we're getting schools that are calling as well. Look, this is the first time I'm hearing from him that there was a problem. I've heard from the parents from Kenner Discovery. Folks, I can tell you, we want nothing more than your kids to be able to play on the field, which we're doing, number one, but number two, we want to get you there, but we have to get there when we can adequately do what is required and incumbent upon us as the facility managers. Look, even the LHSAA, when you look at their September, I don't want to get the date wrong, their September 17th regulations that came out, page two, under fans and spectators, the first section says, "If permitted." Even this LHSAA realized that there's going to be some places where fans aren't going to be allowed. It's the very first two words under their fans and spectator section that says, "If permitted." We're working on it. It's going to be week three. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to first, I have received a number of calls on this subject from parents from Bonneville, and just let me say that I'm a Bonneville graduate, along with Councilwoman McKinney and Councilman Wilmot, so got a couple of Bruins up here, from East Jefferson High School, from John Curtis, and Kenner Discovery. Thank the parents for calling, because it's, it's always good to hear and talk to, to the parents that, the city that they live in, and the school that they go to. As, as Ms. Newton was here today, in supporting the school, that's, that's what we're supposed to do, and it's good to hear, it was good to hear from them relating to that, because I hadn't heard anything else relating to, uh, the sporting facilities from Kenner, to be able to afford the high schoolers to play in it. Listen, everybody know COVID, and I have been a staunch advocate for the safety of the city of Kenner and our safety practices, and I think we've done a pretty good job. But along with that, I have always advocated, as we get better, as the state gets better, as the parish gets better, we have to adjust to that accordingly. I don't, I don't know how many people the Muscatolino Stadium can fit. I do realize the pandemic is here, I do realize the seniors have gone through things that none of us in this building have gone through as seniors in high school. Whatever the capacity is, from the 17th, from the Louisiana High School Association, from the governor, and I believe we're in phase three, we're 25%, it should have been something that should have been shared also with the council, so we could have had input in that, to try to maybe put together a committee to try to do something, something for the high schoolers, particularly those street schools, John Curtis, Bonneville, and Kenner Discovery. And I still think that is something we may be able to get together to ensure, not only for football, but upcoming events. I realize the third week is something good to be able to do, but I think had we started doing something around the 17th, we could have accommodated 25%, because 25% is, would have been regulated by the state and the governor. So I believe going forward, that we should establish some rapport with the administration and the council, to be able to look at this specifically, not only for the high school recreation, but recreation as a whole, for the city of Kenner, to start implementing to be part of that, to put it in place. We are getting better, we are getting safer in the state, and particularly in Kenner, but I think it is a little bit more effort that we have to put into this, particularly recreation, to ensure we are offering, and get ready to offer, the programmings, the football games, and all of this as it relates to the high school, and as it relates to the playgrounds on the Kenner Recreation Department, and I would be willing to be part of that, and we look forward to doing that, to put this in place as we get better. I'm not sure of the communications between the recreation department, the administration, and some of the parents. I just, I, I would have, would have appreciated to be part of that, because, you know, I have a background in the recreation, if coached, have played in the Kenner Recreation Department, just like all of us, particularly, uh, me and Mr. Wilmot, daughters played together during the same era. So this is something I think, while we have to be cautious, we should, we should immediately start looking at this, to put something in play as an advocate for the children in the city of Kenner as it relates to the recreation department. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember McKinney?
Thank you, Council Chair, Council President. Um, excuse me. You know, I, obviously, I am very passionate about this as well, because I have a senior football player at Kenner Discovery, so I want to see him play, and I also have a cheerleader, so, at Kenner Discovery. So, and I'm, I'm a Bonneville alum, I know how important athletics are to, to students, um, you know, that it's something to get back to normal. Uh, I think that it's, you know, I'm happy to hear that week three is going to, they'll have fans, but I think that, you know, there's, there's, next weekend, I know Bonneville's playing, um, you know, as the coach said, that, and they're not going to have fans. Um, so, you know, they're going to miss out on that opportunity, um, and I think that, you know, we need to work together to, to get, to expedite this, because, I, I mean, especially like for Curtis, and, you know, some of the Bonneville students even, they have coaches that come in and travel and watch the students play, to get scholarships and opportunities for them, for, you know, their higher education. Uh, and so this is just kind of a, to me, this is a missed opportunity for them. I think it's really important for us to focus on, get stuff getting back to normal. Um, I'm happy we're in, having, you know, in-person council meetings. Um, I'm happy that we are, you know, inching towards getting back to normal, phase three. Um, I also want to ask, you know, there are, football is obviously the most important right now, because that's getting back to normal, but there are also soccer, volleyball, um, those sports are fall sports as well. Um, I know Kenner Discovery uses, um, some of those facilities, uh, and I'm, I'm interested in finding out what that, if, if those fields are available, um, what's, what is the plan for that? And then also, will there be, I know Mayor Zahn mentioned your sports, getting back to, you know, having, um, is there any plans for football, uh, flag football, tackle football for Kenner? Um, my, you know, I have an eight-year-old who likes to play, um, sports outdoors, he hasn't been able to play since his baseball season, got cut off in March. Um, so I'm, you know, I'm just interested in having more, learning, getting more information about that, um, for all the residents, and, you know, I'm excited about going to, my daughter, every time she goes, we drive by the Esplanade Mall, she's like, oh, that's where gymnast, gymnastics. She calls gymnastic, gymnastics. So, you know, she, she remembers that, she's three, so she loved gymnastics with Kenner, Kenner. Um, she's ready to get back. Dance, I know they, they had some issues with dance. I think everything is just ready to get back, and, um, like I said, I appreciate the administration working. I just want to have, um, some of those questions answered, if you, if you can. Thank you.
It's Council Chairman? Councilman Carroll?
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor. Sorry about that.
There you go.
Now, I was, I was just going to ask, uh, the recreation department to, by our next meeting, to submit some type of a plan from the recreation department that, that puts into place, uh, not only the high school situation, but the overall recreation department, different milestones that we should have, we should start putting in place, to start getting the, the recreation department back on this, on this road. Uh, I would be willing to be part of a committee of the council, and the administration, and recreation, to, to help support that, if asked. So that, I believe, would be starting in a new direction, and who knows, maybe before the third week, we may be able to do something for the high school children, but definitely start doing something, putting something in place for the Kenner Recreation Department. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman? Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to mention recreation, what it's meant to my family. Um, I have one daughter married, and, and, uh, my daughter's 30 now. When she went through sports in Kenner, it was fantastic. We, it was, it was the best family times we had. We did virtually everything, signed up for everything. My daughter was having a tough time in school, but sports was her outlet. We did track and field, we did baseball, we did basketball, and I was one of the dad coaches, right? To participate, it was fantastic. It's something that we believe in, it's core values here in Kenner. We need that. I know we have COVID going on right now, but we need it. Without that, we would have had huge problems back then. My daughter had a rough time in school, and as she went through school, she matured, she learned all about the, whatever she had to do to get ahead in, in academics, and when it came to it, all through high school, she played ball. When she got to college, she played just rec ball. She didn't, she could have been on a team if she wanted to, but I'm so proud of her. She graduated with a 3.7 GPA, she was head of the honor society, she was the president for a couple of years. What a success story, and all the fundamentals came from right here in Kenner. Bless Kenner for that. That was just phenomenal for me and my family, so, um, we need rec, we need recreation, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments?
Council Chairman?
Mayor?
So, I, I'll, let me be a little more clear. We have recreation, we're phasing back into that. I appreciate the council's support. Councilman Carroll, we have no problem giving you a tentative outline, and I do stress the word tentative. Um, I will work, well, our deputy CEO slash recreation director, Chair Pittfield, will work with our CEO, and also with Lee Russell, other deputy CEO, to make sure we get that out to y'all, but it's going to be tentative, guys, everything changes. What we've done is, we've phased back in slowly. I think this administration, I started off with this early on, with the help of this council, has done an excellent job phasing back in. I do agree, we need recreation, but we need recreation with precaution. We need recreation with safety, and I believe that's what we've done. Um, again, I'm in charge of the facilities, I've got to make sure that no one gets- I've got to make sure that no one gets sick, ill, or, God forbid, dies. That's what I have been concerned about since the very beginning. So I don't like limiting people just to, like, a council meeting. I heard Mr. Brown come up before and say we'd like to get back to council chambers. We all would like to get back into the council chambers, but I said that early on. I might start saving my mayor comments for the end, because it seems like I went over all this in the beginning, and I got to go over it all again. I appreciate the support of the council. Y'all need to be a little bit supportive on this. As we move forward with a tentative schedule, we are absolutely phasing everything back in. Again, third week, third week, they, you can have fans in the stands. We are definitely going toward that, unless something happens. Everything is tentative, but if everything keeps on like this, I promised y'all a live council meeting in one of other, other city facilities. Are we here? Okay. Everything has stayed good, so if everything stays the same, we're going to get back to that with fans in the stands, and hopefully, hopefully, we're out of phase three. Look, I don't think Kenner's doing anything different than the NFL. So if you look at the Saints games, there's an issue with that, and there's an issue with some other Saints games. And we do see what happened just recently with the Titans and the Vikings. Now, we don't want to dwell on that, but Kenner's not alone, so I appreciate y'all's support.
If there are no further comments, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Thank you.